And good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Robyn Newell, Principal of Mitchell Nelson, as she has some folks with her tonight that are going to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence. Ms. Newell?
Thank you. Good evening. I have some of our fifth grade leaders from Mitchell Nelson School that are going to help us with the pledge this morning. This is what I'm used to doing in the morning. This is Olivia Moreno.
So you come up here, and this is Reagan, oh, Duran, sorry, I have two Reagans. Q. Kim and Jamir Bradley, and they're going to help us with the pledge. So if you'll please stand up, they'll get us started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now our moment of silence.
All right, we can't, we can't just leave with just the pledge, you know, we have to do something a little bit more than that. I have their fabulous teacher, Ms. Murphy, is up here as well. And you know, we are a leader in me school, and our children are learning the seven habits of highly effective people. And these are highly creative children as well, and they have come up with a chant to help their classmates learn the seven habits, and then that has spread throughout our school. They've done it on our announcements several time, several times, and then they are teaching it to other grade levels on the playground, and so I just knew y'all would want to hear that today. So Jamir, you want to come around this way, and Q, y'all come around this way. Ms. Murphy, you gonna get where they can see you? Stand right up there. I'm gonna let Q get beside you. All right, Ms. Murphy's gonna start, and I'll let you go.
(Singing) These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number one, be proactive, I'm sure to meet. Be proactive, I'm sure to meet. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number two, begin with the end, then might make a claim. Begin with the end, then might make a claim. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number three, first things first, work first and play. Have the first things first, work first and play. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number four, win, win. I win, you win, we win. Win, win, win. I win, you win, we win. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number five, see first and explain. The numbers two, listen before you talk. See first and explain. The numbers two, listen before you talk. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number six, synergize together, it's better. Synergize together, it's better. These are the seven habits. One, these are the seven habits. One, have number seven, sharpen the saw, balance field steps. Sharpen the saw, balance field steps. We know the seven habits. One, we know the seven habits.
Thank you very much. I think I can speak on behalf of the board. We all have enjoyed that. We're glad to have you with us tonight and other meetings as well. I also would like to welcome a group of Boy Scouts, I believe, from St. Paul's Church. Would you stand, gentlemen, please? We are glad to have you in our midst. You're here doing what?
We are here to, uh, for a demonstration party.
All right, very good. Well, we hope you'll come back even when you don't have to come for a requirement. Thank you very much. We're glad to have you. All right, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, in recognition of the fact that we have some guests here tonight to present a couple of reports from the City Schools Foundation and from TSB, I recommend approval of the agenda with the stipulation that we allow our guests to be moved up into the agenda where they can make their presentations first.
All right. Dr. Brown made the motion to move the foundation and also TSB representatives up before other items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course, or none. All right, foundation, you ready?
I am.
All right, come ahead.
If you got a PowerPoint, Trail's gonna get pulled up for me. Chairman Campbell and the rest of the board, thank you very much for letting me make this presentation. I'm David LaRache. I'm the chairman of the Murfreesboro City Schools Foundation. As you all know, we're a private 501(c)(3) not-for-profit that's exclusively dedicated to raising funds for the benefit of the Murfreesboro City Schools Foundation. Lisa has asked me, and it's in our bylaws, that we give this report to you guys every year, and so it is my pleasure to go through the PowerPoint presentation I've got for you that Ms. Trail prepared very graciously. And without further ado, we've got a number of trustees. All the trustees on our organization are, most are private citizens in the community, not affiliated with the government. And basically, we spend our volunteer time trying to raise money and do things that we think benefits the City Schools Foundation. I'm the chair, the first lady of MTSU, Ms. Elizabeth McPhee is the vice chair, Rebecca Upton is our treasurer, and Cindy Ferguson is our secretary. We also have Anita Pertle, David Scott, Ben Parsley, Sandra Parks, Charlie Baum, Laine Severs, Ben Weatherford, Kristy Gaines, Spencer Provo, Minerva Smith, and our most recent member is Dr. Joe Faze. He's a dentist with Murfreesboro Dentistry. Director Gilbert is our ex officio member, and Lisa Trail is also an ex officio member, and she serves as the liaison between the school administration and our board, which is extremely helpful. And frankly, I'm not sure how we would do what we do without some of the administrative support that we get from the school board and the school administration. We are about to start our 2014-2015 year, so we've got a lot of things in the pipeline, but I'm going to mostly speak about our success in the 2013-2014 year. We have two fundraisers, two major fundraisers that we throw. One is a fashion show whereby we have volunteers act as models, and we have sponsors, mostly stores down from the avenue. And we sell tickets to the event, and it's been a lot of fun every year. We've had Mr. Ian Wrights from Channel Four come down along with Liz McPhee, who is a real avid Costello sort of, sort of situation. If you've ever seen it, it's a can't miss. But last year, we had a lot of success. We raised $8,000. Our second fundraiser, which is our major one, we called the Excellence in Education Event, and this is sort of, sort of your fun event you do at the country club where we honor a community leader. Last year, we raised $60,000 at that event, and that was an event honoring Sidney McPhee and Liz McPhee for not only their work with MTSU, but also all the work that they've done, and Liz specifically, with the city schools system. We then spend that money, which is my favorite part of the whole deal. We do have a grant writing program where we invite teachers from the city school system to write grants, from anything from a few hundred dollars for school supplies to thousands of dollars for special programs that they want to put on. We try to fund programs that are innovative and are the sort of expenditures that would not be covered by the normal school budget. This year, we, or last year, we spent $35,000 in grants, and I'll get into more detail about that. Our other big expenditure is what we call parity. What we do is we try to identify the schools in the district that don't have as much PTA involvement and probably don't have as many discretionary funds for the principal to use for things outside of the normal budgeting. We have sort of a formula that we follow every year to get, to not only pick the schools that we think deserve parity, but also the percentage of the funds we have to spend towards parity. And last year, we gave $19,200 to schools as part of our parity program. From the grants last year, we had 23 grant applications that we funded. That's from 10 different schools in the system. They were anything from something as simple as a smart board, a technology purchase, to some very sophisticated and advanced science programs that I think were really innovative, such as plant the seeds, read the harvest, which was only a $218 grant, but we decided to grant it just because, because of its, how innovative it was. We also have some large grants, such as the C2+M2 success grant for $4,000. Of the parity dollars, that's usually spent by the, by the principal. Some of the expenditures last year, the sixth grade of one school went on a field trip on those parity dollars. It has been spent on technology as well as extra tutoring. Again, these are funds that we, that we want to supplement what the school board is giving the schools. We don't want to replace anything, and so we're trying to find extra areas where the money could be best spent. And I think that the grants and the parity has been a really good use of those funds. Some of the other events we have, we've always sponsored, last few years anyway, sponsored a new teacher reception. Mrs. McPhee's always, and Dr. McPhee's always been very gracious letting use their home, and we invite new teachers of the school system to meet us and have some refreshments. We are able to funnel, I don't know if funnel's the right word, but there are certain sorts of grants, corporate grants, that can't be given to a governmental organization because of various regulations and rules. And what we're able to do is that serve as an independent 501(c)(3) and have them get the tax deductible donation from us, and then we're able to earmark that money for something in the school system. Of that, we were able to do $15,000 of funding through our organization, straight to, straight to the school system, and we don't count that in our fundraising budget. It's just an opportunity we have to help the school system. We are, right now, and we have received all of our grant applications this year. I think we're in the about 70-plus grants. It's a bigger folder than we've had in years, and I'm chairing that grant reading program right now. We've distributed it to everybody, and everybody's reading those grants and trying to pick the cream of the crop, which it keeps getting harder every year, which I can only say is a testament to the school system. And like I said, the Excellence in Education, last year, we honored Dr. McPhee and Elizabeth McPhee in our school that we focused on, which the students of the school a lot of times provide decorations for the event. We honored Pittarin Elementary. Going forward, we're always looking for the best way to use, to raise money, to use our money. Right now, I think we've got a good system, but we've been working with Dr. Gilbert to sort of make sure that we're not spending money on technology, that, that does not fit with the overall plan. She's been very good at letting us know and letting her teachers know the sort of technology that they should be asking for if they're asking for it in their grants. This year, we received $165,000 in grants, and again, we're going to whittle that down. We don't have that much money to give away, but we're going to find the best. And I've got a real, I've brought it down to a science now, how we grade those grants and figure out the best way to distribute the money. So coming, beginning of October, middle of October actually, on the 13th or 14th, we'll know who's getting that grant money and how much money we have to give out. So I'm very excited about that. And I just, again, want to very much thank the school board for letting us use Lisa's time and effort in this. We're all professionals. None of us get paid for any of this, and to have the sort of nuts and bolts, down and dirty administrative help that Lisa provides us is immeasurable, and, you know, I think that the money we're raising is a real testament to the help that, that the school board, or the school administration is giving us with Lisa and everybody else. So I thank y'all very much, and I look forward to raising more money. We hope to see all of you at our fundraisers coming up.
Thank you very, very much. We certainly do appreciate the work that the foundation does for students and teachers as well. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
And as, as all of you know, Cogger was our representative with the foundation board, and we asked last month if anybody was interested, and Jared Barrett is very interested, and so we're going, Jared's going to be our rep with your group for, with the foundation board.
I can't be pleased more. I think Jared, I know Jared, I think could be a great addition to our board. Appreciate, appreciate you asking around for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Torres?
Good afternoon. I want to say thank you for giving TSB the opportunity to assist with the evaluation for Dr. Gilbert, and giving me the opportunity to come here and present. My name is Ben Torres, and I'm the Director of Research and Communications with the Tennessee School Boards Association. I passed out a packet ahead of time. Each of you should have a copy of the evaluation instrument that was given to us. And running over it real quick, you had Appendix A, B, and C. Appendix A was filled out by school administrators. Appendix B and C were filled out by school board members. So turning to Appendix A, there were 19 criteria to rate Dr. Gilbert on on a scale of one to five. Her average score was a 4.31, and that 4.31 comes from 21 school administrators that submitted the evaluation instrument back to us. Now, turning to Appendix B, this is what the board filled out. There are six main topics. Underneath those six topics, there are subcategories to rate Dr. Gilbert in. So starting with the first one, board relationship, there were six subtopics. The average score was 4.02. Under community relationships, the average was 4.69. The average for staff and personnel relationships was 3.74. Under facilities and finance, the average was 3.91. Under vision, the average was 3.93. Now, I'm going to stop real quick before we go on to student achievement. If you look at student achievement and then number two, we actually only had six submissions for that individual question. So that average of 4.33 under number two is based on six. It's not based on seven. So I just wanted to point that out. That way, nobody had any questions. So the average for student achievement was 4.38. So the overall average score, when you average all those categories together, is a 4.11 on Appendix B. Now, moving on to Appendix C, these are annual objectives, and this comes from the annual report that I believe you were presented at your board retreat from, excuse me, Dr. Gilbert. There were a total of 13 questions, but if you'll look, six, seven, eight, and nine had subquestions that you used to evaluate the overall question. So taking the average of each of those, for Appendix C, the total mean score was a 3.40. Now, immediately following Appendix C is the comments section. These comments come from administrators and board members. They are completely anonymous, however, so we aren't aware of which individual administrator or board member made these comments. And I hope I'm not moving too fast. If I am, just let me know. And on the last page, you have the overall evaluation score. So once again, Appendix A is 4.31, Appendix B is 4.11, and Appendix C is 3.40. So the overall evaluation is a 3.94, and I want to say that is a very good score and a increase from last year's evaluation for Dr. Gilbert. So I commend you on that, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Campbell, members of the Board of Education, do y'all have any particular questions?
Dr. Brown?
I have just a comment in that it's nice to look at trends, and I know we do this every year, so would it be possible, when you come back next year, and I have the old evaluations, so I could go back and look, but it would be nice to be able to just look at a comparison from year to year to year, either graphically or just number-wise of the director's performance.
Absolutely. We can include that next time. And just, just a quick rundown. On Appendix A, last year was a 3.61, and this year is a 4.31, so that's a significant increase.
Repeat that, please.
Last year, it was a 3.61. This year, it is a 4.31 on Appendix A. When you go to Appendix B, last year, it was a 3.66 overall, and this year, it is a 4.11. And then Appendix C, last year was a 3.60, this year is a 3.40. And the overall for last year was a 3.62, and this year it is a 3.94. And that is based on the five-point scale.
Mr. Barrett?
So the 3.62 for last year, didn't we only have four columns last year when we did it? So the 3.62 is like what we did this year, the weighted? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Right, correct. Let me take a look real quick. I have it here with me.
Okay.
Last year, you had a four-point scale, so it's not exactly apples to apples, if you will, because we would have to go back and then wait last year's based on a five-point scale with this year. Now, if that's something you're interested in, you know, we can, we can try to get that to you.
I would actually be interested in that.
Okay.
Just a question.
Last year, we only asked four. We had four columns. This year, we got five, so you're, you're not really comparing the same data year to year. That's what I was trying to get at, sorry.
And when we first looked at it, we had four. We changed.
Exactly. And then we, Nancy made the suggestion about making it five columns, which I totally agreed with.
Ms. Renee?
Just a comment, pardon me, just a comment, please. I really appreciate the fact that we were able to move to the five-point scale, as Dr. Gilbert allowed us to do that, making it more in line with what the teachers and administrators are evaluated at. And I think that probably if you compare last year's with the four-point scale to this year's, it would probably reflect somewhat lower, and we all know our test scores, as well as everybody's test scores, went down. And I think that's the area that we're all probably have zeroed in on, and I think it's a reflection of the times and the fact that this happens statewide. And so I hope that there's, we know what a great job she does. I hope there are no upset feelings or anything. And in the same vein, we want the teachers to realize we understand when, you know, a large percentage of their evaluation comes from the same information. And so I want the public to know that that's where it's coming from, and the fact that scores were down this year because of the difference in the test. So that's my comment.
Ms. Phillips?
I also want to thank Dr. Gilbert for sitting there with such grace while we publicly talk about her evaluation. I don't know anyone who would love to have that happen, you know? And I just think it's, I just want to commend you, not just for the job you did, but the grace you show here today and every day. I really appreciate that, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Ms. Mia?
I just wanted to, have you reviewed this? Did you get this in advance?
Got it today.
So what stood out to you?
To me, the thing I was most pleased with, there are a couple of things. I'm very interested in the administrators' opinions because they are who I work with every day. And so I'm grateful when it talks about accessibility. That's, that's critically important to me. It's critically important that if a principal calls me or a district person calls me, that I'm there regardless of the time. So I think that is the one thing that I'm happiest with on here. And when I look at it, that's, that's the area I'm going to focus on. I'm really, the whole Appendix C is scores, and I'm aware of that. At least the vast majority of that is, is scores. And I, and I think there's more to the job, any person's job, than just test scores, particularly this year. I know that at the summit, if you notice, the two things that were talked about, one of them was the misalignment between the assessment and the standards, and I think that goes back to what Ms. Renee was reflecting on. So as far as the thing that I'm most pleased about, it would be that accessibility, I think is important. I think when you look at the idea of professional growth for administrators, I'm very happy with that. That's something that we worked on, and it's terribly difficult to do because of the time constraints, but the fact that, that there's the thought there that we are offering professional growth activities, and I give credence for that to the instructional staff and for the principals working so well together and expressing what they need. So I really appreciate that. So that's, that's what I'm always looking for, because if I'm accessible, then I want to hear what they're saying. And if I'm not accessible, then I don't need to be here.
Now, I think accessibility with you, with the board, with the principals, I think that's very important to the success of our system. So I think that's a very good point.
Thank you. Ben, I will say to you this in regards to this evaluation, on the last, the section where we got to the Appendix C, I didn't do it this way. I graded on A, B, C, and D in each category.
And what we did with that is we took the...
Composite of those?
Composite of those and put that into, and fitted into the 1.5 rubric.
Well, I would just, you know, I would have done it as a group, but I thought we were looking at each line item, so...
It wasn't an issue?
Maybe next year, we can have a little explanation for us old folk.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody pertaining to the evaluation? Ben, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate the work that you do. We appreciate the work that TSB does in helping us out throughout the year.
Well, thank you very much for having me, and if in the coming days you have any more questions, feel free to call, email. We're here to help, and hopefully we'll have answers to those other questions soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's get back to our regular agenda. Dr. Gilbert, communications?
Well, we have Murph's Fund Run early Saturday morning at 7:30 at the Gateway Island, so everyone is invited, and for those who run, they will get a Murph's Fund Run Medal. And that is very difficult to say, by the way. That's what I'm saying. But, but the participants are asked to bring some school supply, new school supply, and that is the only requirement for that. So if you are interested in that for the public, please visit Parks and Rec, or you can call the Murfreesboro City Schools, and we can get you information on that. The Outreach Department would like to thank First Baptist Church on Castle Street. They have given us a donation toward purchase of the Rover tickets, and that's very important for our families to be able to go to the schools. Black Fox would like to thank Howard and Sally Wall. As you know, they have been contributors to that school since its beginning in 1990. They have made a $5,000 donation to Black Fox. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank Bob Parks Realty. They have donated umbrellas to keep everyone dry during dismissal. And then Amy Norville is a very special dare officer, and the Tennessee Dare Officers Association recently met in Murfreesboro, and Amy is the president of that group. So we thank Amy for her leadership across the state, and also I'd like to acknowledge the Murfreesboro Police Department. In fact, I would love at some point to have them here to acknowledge them personally. We call them on almost a daily basis about something. It can be as simple as we have a problem with a stoplight, or we have, we need something, and they are just amazing. So really appreciate the officers that are in our schools and want to congratulate Amy Norville on her leadership role. Siobhan Davis Lewis has been named the Rutherford Cable September 2014 Spotlight Member, so we congratulate her. And speaking of congratulations, Stephanie Turner, who is a marvelous third-grade teacher at Bradley Academy, has been named Channel Two News Educator of the Week, and so we congratulate Stephanie. And also Rebecca Few has been selected. There were 30 participants, selected educators that were chosen to be part of the Tennessee Department of Education's collaboration with the Institute for Learning, and they will be part of a math cohort project with working with coaching. And congratulations to Northfield Elementary. They have been awarded a $6,500 grant from the Richard Siegel Foundation for their STEAM lab. Northfield is very interested in moving towards STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, so we're thrilled with that. And then the nutrition program has been awarded $10,000 as a result of meeting goals for claiming direct certified children under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. And those are your communications.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Yes, I just want to take a moment and invite personally all my colleagues on the board to Murph's Fund Run Saturday morning. I'm really excited about this event this year. In the past, it was associated with the fabulous Murfreesboro Half Marathon, and there was an entrance fee. This year... This year, just bring one new school item, and you are welcome. It's open to children and adults, and it's a standalone event, so you won't have to contend with the crowds of the half marathon. And it's supposed to be beautiful weather. So I invite you all to come out and hang out and cheer on the runners or the walkers. Ah, Gateway Island. And it starts at 7:30 a.m. Saturday morning. And so we hope we will have teams of teachers out there, principals. Thank you.
You have a close connection with Murf, don't you?
I do, I do.
You know him personally?
Yeah.
Okay, well, good. I'm sure, I know you're speaking on his behalf, and we do, we hope that a lot of folks will attend the Fun Run on Saturday.
They have more registered this year than last year, so we're excited already.
Very good, good deal. All right. Consent items?
Move for approval.
Dr. Brown moves for approval.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Ms. Rinear, second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Action items?
The first action item you have is approval of another tenure, and that would be Carrie Horton at Mitchell Nelson School. So we ask for your vote to approve her tenure.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Phillips?
Why is that se, just curious, why is it separate from the regular tenure list?
Well, I'm going to attempt to answer this. If I answer it wrong, then you can correct me, Ms. Ringstaff. This is the first year that you'll remember that we've had tenure in about three years. And so for some of our teachers, they, and I think this may be the case with this one, where there's some partials there that added up to the five years.
Okay.
And so we've gone back and checked that, and so she would be in addition.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, a second.
Second.
Dr. Brown, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much. All right. Board elections, Ms. Baker?
Okay, it's that time of year for election of the board chair and vice chair. And I know some of you may be thinking, well, we just did that for Mr. Campbell. But Mr. Campbell's initial term was serving out the remainder of Mary Wade's term. So the board elections are always in September. And according to Board Policy BO3, and according to State Statute TCA 49-2-202(c)(2) and Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, board officers are to be elected annually. The State Statute mandates that the board elect a board chair. However, our Board Policy BO3 also requires that we elect a board vice chair. The term for the officers to be elected would be from November 1st to October 31st. And nominations for board chair will be given, followed by a roll call vote, and then nominations will be taken for the vice chair position with a roll call vote. A majority of the entire board, not just those persons present, but that requires four votes, are necessary for one to be voted into office, and that is pursuant to a State Statute. And board officers cannot be elected by acclamation. After the nominations have been made and seconded, Ms. Price will call your name, and you should state the name of the nominee that you are voting for. And please remember that it takes four votes for a member to be elected. Do I have any questions before we start?
Okay. I have a nomination.
Okay, I will call for nominations for board chair.
I nominate Nancy Rinear.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Butch Campbell.
Any other nominations? Okay, seen none. Ms. Price, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Barrett?
Nancy Rinear.
Dr. Brown?
Butch Campbell.
Chair Campbell?
Butch Campbell.
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Phillips?
Nancy Rinear.
Ms. Rinear?
Butch Campbell.
Ms. Smith?
Butch Campbell.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Campbell got four votes, Mr. Campbell will be our chair. Okay, now I will call for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Nancy Rinear.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, seen none. Ms. Price, please call the roll.
Dr. Brown?
Nancy Rinear.
Chair Campbell?
Nancy Rinear.
Mr. Kane?
Nancy Rinear.
Ms. Phillips?
Nancy Rinear.
Ms. Rinear?
Nancy.
Her.
Sorry. Ms. Smith?
Nancy Rinear.
And Ms. Barrett?
Nancy Rinear.
Okay, and Ms. Rinear will be our vice chair. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you both for serving.
Yes, thank you. I'll say thank you. I appreciate your support and hope we can continue to do things for the betterment of the school system.
I second that.
All right. Election of Tennessee Legislative Network Representative. Ms. Baker, do you handle this?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. Who can give us the responsibility of this person, other than being a representative to the legislature, representing our school board, and meeting with legislators if, when, and if possible, and keeping in contact and condition with them at this point in time?
Is this the one that's through the TSBA? Or is this the opposite position?
Is this what you did or what Jared did?
I'm not sure.
I thought it came from, I'm speaking out of order, I guess, but I thought that it came from TSBA.
It did. It was their recommendation that we needed to do so. Jared, yours, the thing that you've been doing has been kind of through the whole district?
Yeah, it was, well, it was with Lee Harrell, their legislative representative, so I don't...
Is that what this is?
I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay.
Jared Barrett.
Other nominations?
Not everybody at once.
Do we need a roll call vote? At this point, I'll say nominations have ceased. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Um, Campbell.
Jared Barrett.
Jared Barrett.
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Barrett.
Ms. Rinear?
Mr. Barrett.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Barrett.
And Dr. Brown?
Jared Barrett. Well, thank you, board. I look forward to letting you know what's going on on Legislative Hill. I try to keep abreast of all that stuff, so...
Keep us posted and don't let us get behind the eight ball.
I will.
Let us know what this job is.
I will, I will also let you know.
Well, and looking at the, and looking at the email from Lee Harrell, it was exactly as Mr. Campbell indicated there, that they did ask for a representative that would communicate local concerns to the local legislature, to keep the board informed of legislative developments and regularly report on board meetings, schedule meetings with legislators in the board, possibly in conjunction with other school boards, cooperate with other local organizations to support certain legislative positions, provide leadership for the local board. So you hit it right on the nail.
Thank you.
Well, let me interject something here, not stepping out of bounds at all, but Wayne Blair and I met the other day for lunch, and we talked about our meeting that we wanted to have with the legislators. And we have, we kind of decided, and I guess now, Mr. Barrett, that may be in your category corner, but we were looking at sometime in the first two weeks of November, that would be after the November election, but before everybody leaves for Thanksgiving. And Mr. Blair is ready to contact his board, and I guess as chair of our board, I'm ready to contact ours, but I may let Mr. Barrett do that now. But if you would be looking at your calendars for those days between November 4th election and Thanksgiving, and see if maybe we could meet. We had first thought about November the 13th, and that's a Thursday, but there's a conflict there. Dr. Gilbert has something already, and we certainly want to have her here. And not looking at the same type of meeting that we had last year. I think Mr. Blair and I both would like to have us just where we're just sitting around the table and giving out ideas and letting them know what we think and let them know what they think, rather than a question-and-answer period where everybody wanted to talk and give their opinions on things. So I hope that that'll, that'll come through. But if you will...
Okay.
And Mr. Campbell, if I can move that, I will move that, if I can get someone else to do that in my place, if that works for the county and for you all.
If there is a date in that time period that you cannot, if you'll please, you want to let you know, you want me to?
Yeah, I can, or...
If you'll let me know, being that I've already started with Wayne, and then we'll, but we'll...
Okay.
Keep in touch with, for sure, okay? Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to see us have some individual visits, board members have individual visits, maybe taking some of the legislators around our schools, so we're not just talking about random schools. We're talking about real children in real schools.
Okay.
Personalize it, yeah.
We had talked about taking them on a tour of the new school overall at one time also.
Absolutely. What I'm talking about, Phil takes one, you know, I take another, just kind of like we, our city council responsibilities, and we don't have to, you know, do this right now. That's just a thought I thought would be good to personalize. It's not all policy, it's people.
Good point.
Good idea. All right. Move to go on to the next item? Where are we?
The next, right.
Fingerprinting and background checks?
Right, and I'll start the discussion and then let Mr. Anderson finish it. Rutherford County Schools, for a number of years, has had a, in their teacher center there on their campus, they have been doing background checks and also fingerprinting. And we have been sending our folks over to them. They are to the point now that they are needing that space. And we are having such a backlog now, because of course, anytime we hire, whether it's ESP or bus drivers or whoever it is, we have to get the background check and the fingerprinting. So some of our folks are having to go to Shelbyville and Cool Springs now to have that done. We have talked with the company that does Rutherford County Schools, and they are interested in partnering with us. That would allow our folks immediate access to that. So that's essentially, and Mr. Anderson, I'll let you finish that discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. What this, what this means to us as a school district is basically instant access to get our potential employees fingerprinting and get our background checks right away, instead of waiting a week to get them in for an appointment. We would receive from the organization $3 for every background check we do. It would include people from the county, people from city, city government, et cetera, that we would have doing the fingerprints. Based on hiring two part-time employees, the county school system did it, and they basically did a break-even system, which is what we would look for. The benefit of this is, is much greater than just a break-even opportunity for us. The benefit is a much quicker turnaround on these. We went and looked at our facilities to where we could potentially do it and not interfere with the operation, daily operation of the school system. And we have an entrance to the central office that's on the north side by the parking lot, the visitor parking lot. And we can come right in that door, block off the rest of the building through existing doors that are there now, and they would only be able to come into that section, so they would not be in to interfere with the rest of the operations of the school system. We looked at as a big benefit for us to be able to get the turnaround times much quicker and get the information back right away, and we would be in control of when they could get their appointments. So we have, Kelly has seen the location today. She went and saw where we were wanting to have it and thought it was a, you know, a good spot for us to try to put this facility in force.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Just help me a little bit with the history. First of all, and I have a couple of questions. One is, how long would it be before we saw the return of our, of any, I suppose we would have to purchase machinery?
I believe the equipment is their equipment that they, that they give to us to utilize.
Okay, so they give us equipment to utilize, and so when an employee comes in, we charge them a certain amount, or a future employee, is that, how does that work?
The background checks, whoever organization is getting the background check pays for the background check, because it goes through all the federal clearinghouses and the local and state governments, and then they give us $3 per background check that we do. We are still going to have to pay for background checks, just like any organization, but now we're getting some of the money back and we're controlling the flow.
I guess, I just don't know why I don't understand this. Let's say a bus driver comes in. We are the people wanting the background check, right?
Yes, we are required to have the background check.
Okay, so we're required to have the background check. So we pay typically, right now, we pay someone to do the background check?
Yes.
How much do we pay now?
I'm not sure of the exact number. Ms. Ringstaff, do you know how many? $48.
Okay, so we pay for the background check.
Yes, ma'am.
So who's going to give us money? That's what I'm, I'm missing the point on this.
The organization, Ms. Baker?
Let me see if I can help clarify some. Right now, our background checks are technically done through the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation.
Okay.
And this particular company, Morpho Trust USA, has the state contract with the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation to do the fingerprinting and run the background check information that is provided to the TBI to finalize a background check. So what we will be doing is we will just be a site where individuals can come in, have their fingerprints taken through the equipment provided by Morpho Trust, and then that is all electronically sent to that company, which in turn sends it to the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation. So we're strictly, we're not technically conducting the background check. All these two individuals we'll be hiring part-time are doing is getting the fingerprints put into the computer equipment.
Oh, okay.
And I called to talk to the lady today, because I, like you, was a little bit confused about what actually was taking place, and that's what is taking place. We don't retain any documentation electronically or in hard copy. It is all in Morpho Trust equipment that is sent straight to that company, which in turn sends it to the TBI. So we just have the people that physically facilitate obtaining the fingerprints.
I see. And would we be taking fingerprints for people other than people in the city school system?
Yes.
Ah.
Yes, yes. But our people get to go to the front of the line, so to say, to have this, to have their fingerprints done, rather than having to drive to Cool Springs or Shelbyville and wait two or three weeks to get fingerprinted in order to start work for us.
Would there be a potential for any, I guess this would be hard to know, but any predators? Child, convicted child?
That, I mean, that's one reason that people, these are all jobs that require people to have background checks done so that the TBI can determine what their status is.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rinear?
I also have several questions, and I apologize that I didn't get to call Mr. Anderson or Mr. Ringstaff today. I have a sick doggy, but anyway. So MCS is going to pay these two employees?
They, we pay them through our payroll system, but the money is reimbursed to us at $3 a person who's fingerprinted.
But $3 a person, $3 per fingerprint, is that going to cover the payroll for these two employees?
That's a good question. Based on the history that the county has, it did cover the two employees.
At what would their salary be? Like minimum wage?
It's close to like $10 an hour.
Okay. So would these be considered Murfreesboro City employees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My next question is, okay, that was a comment. Okay, because this listing that we got of these different departments and volunteers and instruction, transportation, all that, I was all in favor, till I got down to the line that says, I'm hoping, let me, let me preface this, I'm hoping that we can eliminate a subgroup here, would be my hope, because I would not want to use a city school's... be my hope, because I would not want to use a city school's location to have people come in who want a gun carry permit. That's my feeling. I know that's personal, but I don't put the two together at all. And I would not, I will tell you right now, I won't vote for it. Sorry.
Ms. Smith?
Another question I have is, did Rutherford County have to provide some benefits that we may have, will we have to pay, have benefits for these employees that maybe Rutherford County didn't have to provide because of the change in the laws?
Not when they're part-time, no ma'am.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I still don't think that.
Ms. Renier?
I'm sorry. I still don't think that, is there an answer? Can we eliminate that subgroup?
I think we would have to address it directly to the organization, but I just seriously doubt we could since we're just getting the fingerprints for them to process.
Would they be carrying guns into that building? They were getting their permit, so they wouldn't have access to guns?
Correct.
Okay.
But they're not going into a school for this?
No.
Right. It would be basically exactly what the county schools is doing now.
So they'd be going.
Well, in fact, it would be what the county schools is doing.
Basically going to an unused office, for lack of a better word.
Right.
What are the planned hours of operation, do we know? Like a Monday through Friday, one to four?
Do you know what the county, eight to four?
Okay. Do we know how long the contract with the state of Tennessee is or how much longer?
It expires June 14th of 2015.
Okay.
And I don't have on this document if there are any automatic renewals.
I'm just thinking, when the contract does expire, unless say a new vendor wins the bid, will they offer us the same? Or would we have to close down shop?
I have a question.
We're paying two employees $10 an hour to work from what time every day, five days a week?
One employee to work from eight to noon, another one to work from twelve to four.
Okay, so we're paying $80 a day for two people. And we're getting back, we're getting back $3 per person that goes through the system.
Do we, has anybody anticipated how many?
That's what I was going to say, that we're paying out forty, we're going to get back three, that means we're going to have to have fourteen people a day go through on an average. Right?
The county brought in $19,000 a year on this, approximately 500 background checks per month.
They brought in $19,000, 500, that's 1,500 a month. And the 19,000 is going to be how many months? Going to be more than 12, isn't it?
I don't know what their arrangement was. That's the arrangement that was presented to us.
So we may not have the same arrangement that Rutherford County had?
I don't know. I know that they, I know I've talked to Ms. Paula Barnes and she said it's approximately $19,000 that they bought in a year. And they had two part-time employees.
I'm a little concerned about not having enough information financially.
I think the point you're trying, like you say, $80 a day, five days a week, $400 a week in labor. If we make a fee of $3 per applicant, we've got to have 134 people per week getting the test. 134 people per week.
And what did you say? What did Paula say?
Now, the state has told me that they, we would expect about an average of 500 background checks per month.
Okay.
So it's 1,500 per month of average of income that we would get.
Given, given you're paying out 1,600 to 1,700.
No, 16.
You're paying 400 a week.
So they got, they brought, repeat that, please? I'm sorry?
We get $3 per background check and then 500, an average of 500 a month.
500 applicants per month?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we don't plan to be open during Christmas holidays and things like that.
Right, that's true.
It's, it's not really a 52.
Year-round?
Yes.
But.
I think Nancy had a question.
Ms. Phillips?
Well, that's okay. Yeah, I was just wondering a couple of things. One is, are part-time employees, don't they, even they can be vested in our system, right? And after five years, part-time employees can be vested? Is that true? What is the number on that for retirement?
Part-time employees are not part of the Tennessee State Retirement Plan.
Okay. I'm not talking, but we used to have it where our part-time employees were vested after five years. And sometimes we'd, but anyway, the next thing is that they get no benefits at all.
Correct.
No benefits. And the, why are they leaving Rutherford County? Why is this not happening in Rutherford County?
Rutherford County needs the space.
They need the space.
At their location?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's.
Where are they at?
They're in the teacher center. When I, when I took this job, I went over and added a background check there. And it's a, it's a, it's just one room, which is basically what we would have, which is at the teacher's center right there on their campus.
I know what's that's on, on the other side of the interstate, as we sit.
Right, it's right next to their teacher learning center, where they have there. And the advantage to us would be, instead of going to Rutherford County and having to wait if they, like we are having to do now, we would have it right in our building. So basically, their facility is no different than our facility as far as access to who would have it.
But they need the space.
Right.
That, I call, I call it the spare office. So they need that extra space.
Right.
We have the space.
Right.
So is it possible they would close theirs down and therefore we would, and I use these terms loosely, get their business?
That's what we're doing.
Do you see what I'm thinking?
That's the whole point.
Okay, I thought we were maintaining both of them, I'm sorry.
You know, I have to make this comment with all due respect. We don't have to do everything the county does. I just want to say.
Ms. Barry?
So is the fingerprinting company directing people here in going for, if we decide to do this, they're going to say, you go here and get your fingerprints to this location?
Yes. All sites would have to still go through the computer and make appointments and things. This would be a convenience for our teachers, for our schools. Principals can get their teachers quicker because of our late hires. Some of our schools had to wait a week before they'd get their new teacher. This would provide, if I'm a new teacher and I'd come in and sign my new hire paperwork, I'd go down the hall and get a fingerprint, background check, all in one day.
Ms. Renier?
I guess I still have a question about the potential applicants, I guess. When it says potential city employees and potential county employees, is that not just school system, is that overall, maybe Ms. Baker can answer that, overall city and overall county employees? Because I don't see how at this point in time, we would have 500 applicants a month since school has already begun if it's, if we're limited to school systems.
I think this can be from people that are applying for jobs with any city or county, not just Rutherford or Murfreesboro, because right now, some of our employees go to Shelbyville or Cool Springs to get their background checked. So it's probably anyone within the middle Tennessee area that, that needs a TBI-based fingerprinted background check.
I'll give you an example. We hired someone today, the soonest that we could get them in Rutherford County is October the 2nd. And they're not comfortable going to Shelbyville, Lebanon, or Cool Springs. So they're going to wait till October the 2nd to get fingerprints, to start work for Murfreesboro City Schools.
So then we would have the option of putting our people ahead of everybody else if they're, if we want to? Is that what you're saying?
Our building.
We could do some walk-ups if they're available.
Okay. Ms. Barry?
Do we know if the county, you said they made 19,000 a year or 19,000 a month?
A year.
Okay. Do we know if they broke even all the time or if it was make money or lose money? I'm just not.
Their goal was to break even as well.
And did they?
Yes.
So they didn't lose money year to year?
Correct.
Okay.
Are they're closing regardless?
More than likely, if we don't do it, they'll have to find somebody else in Murfreesboro.
But I mean, that location is going to close no matter what?
Yes.
Do we know when?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have one last.
Ms. Phillips?
You know, this, this sounds very necessary and helpful. On the other hand, I just have to say, it's a, it sounds to me like a security police activity almost. And for some reason, that, I'm just, you know, I don't, is there any place within the city that this could be done, a building that the city would have?
I don't know.
I mean, why does it have to be a school system? You know?
But it's not in a school. The finger, the office would be in our central office.
Right, right, right. And then my last concern is taking on two more employees with our budget and our strain the way it is. It's a gamble whether we would break even.
Mr. Anderson, can you speak to that in any way or form or fashion?
If we don't have the volume and they're part-time employees, we can reduce the hours of service, which would reduce the overall amount of money we would have to spend. So, you know, Mr. Ringstaff gave you what our optimum hours would be to operate, but let's say we don't have the traffic, you know, the foot traffic to do that, you can cut it back to four hours a day or six hours a day unless it's contractually obligated to be an eight-hour-a-day operation.
Is it contractually?
I haven't seen the actual contract. I don't know if Ms. Baker has it.
I have not seen in here anything that dictates the hours of operation.
Those are the hours that Rutherford County operates and so I was trying to mirror that, those hours as much as possible. And they would have that volume. That's what I've been told.
So if, if those hours are not mandated by, who oversees this program? The state?
Yes, well, the company that got the state contract, Morpho Trust.
So if we wanted to decrease the number of hours per day, we don't have a problem doing that even if we sign a contract with the company?
I'm sure we could negotiate shorter hours.
Ms. Smith?
Like Dr. Gilbert, I went to that facility last year for my tennis coaching role for the county. And it was, it's just a small spot. It wasn't a big deal. There, there were people, I had to schedule an appointment, there were two, three other people that were there waiting in line. You know, what I, what I, I mean, so I think, it sounds like to me it's, it wouldn't be that big of a deal, though I do understand about that maybe their police department sure would be nice if they did it instead. But, but it didn't, it wasn't that big of a deal. And if we could shorten the hours, if we're not making the money, that should be fine. But it'd be great for our own employees to be able to step in and, and go. Now, what I want to make sure is that they had to adhere to all policies involving the facility. So Dr. Gilbert can't be sitting at her desk smoking a cigarette. I don't want them sitting at their desk smoking a cigarette. I mean.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Ms. Barry?
I guess we'd make sure those, the signage is there that we usually see in front of our building, because we're going to have a lot of visitors, it sounds like.
Correct.
They would clearly be visible for them when they came in the building.
Okay.
Could they carry a firearm? Could, could the fingerprint people carry a firearm?
No, ma'am. And not everyone who is employed with this will have to get drug tested and enabled to do the background checks and things like that.
Any other discussion?
They're on the internet, morphotrust.com. They're a photograph of the scanner that you put your hands on. I looked up the office locations. I was expecting to see multiple, but there's only a half dozen, one being in Franklin. Those, I'm assuming are more administrative and not finger, where to go get your fingerprints taken. I would assume too, people that work in restaurants now have to get fingerprints? That they serve beverages?
All right, Ms. Barry?
I'd just like to make a comment. It seems like we'd get these things like the day before and I'd like a little bit more lead time in the future if we can, you know, so we could ask these kind of, you know, so we can dwell on it a little more. I'm just remembering something else we had to vote on and it seemed like we got it in like 11th hour and I just.
The credit card machine.
The credit, yeah, the credit card machine. I would just appreciate a little bit more lead time on these types of things, you know, in the future if we can.
And please feel free to call anytime. I'm going to be at the office or Gary or Ralph will be there. So when you get these with the agenda or I send an email, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
All right, I'm looking, Ms. Dr. Brown?
Well, we can do this and if we need to, I'll vote yes. But to me, it does seem like it would be a more appropriate function of the city overall to be doing and not just the school board. So, Mr. Washington, is that something that we could explore?
I hear you. I'm writing it down as we speak. I'll see.
And if we deferred this tonight, how quickly could the city council decide if they would do it?
Well, our next meeting is, is next week. So I have until then to run it by Rob and see what the potentials are. He's probably watching this meeting as we speak, to be honest with you. I asked him to. So we'll see what, we'll see what we can do. Yeah, I can defer it, you know, just move on.
All right, I'd like to have a, have a motion one way or the other. Whatever, what's your pleasure?
Motion to defer.
Ms. Phillips, motions to defer until?
After Mr. Washington's had a chance to talk with who he wishes to talk with.
All right.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Smith. Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Ms. Chair Campbell?
Yes?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Renier? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Barrett?
Aye.
And Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Okay. Then as soon as we, as soon as you get some information, I guess, we'll determine when or not we put it back on our agenda.
That'll work.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for everybody for their comments. All right, next item on our agenda is reports and information, overall creek area views.
I just have the aerial views that are attached to your document. You can see the finished product of the school and how beautiful it looks from overhead as much as it looks when you walk in the front door. We just included those to let you see the final, those are the final pictures that will be made of the school from the overhead shots. Just wanted to include those for you.
Are those shots available for people to see on TV or no?
It's, I don't think it's loaded in the computer over there, so no.
Dr. Brown?
What is the status of total completion of the school? Because I had a parent and child that I was talking to recently say that they were excited about the potential of getting a hot meal, so.
The kitchen part is the part that's not quite finished yet. They hope to finish it over fall break so they can have everything completed, everything but the kitchen's done. Have it completed for us to take possession of it over fall break. That's our, that's our goal at this time.
Ms. Phillips, I mean, Ms. Renier, excuse me.
This is just a comment. As we are making our rounds visiting this first PTA, PTO meetings, mine was at overall creek last week, I believe. And an excited group of parents were there, second graders were doing a program, and it was just a really nice atmosphere. it was just a really nice atmosphere. So, congratulations to Overall Creek.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item?
You had asked for a report on NWEA, so I'm going to ask Karen Hawkins if she would come up, and also Amber East is here, who is a teacher at Scales.
Good evening. We placed some things at your spot to, I've got your, the slides for the PowerPoint, and then I also have a brochure from NWEA. I know that last month you asked for some additional information. So I thought that what we would do is, I'm going to just kind of give you an overview and just give you some background information on the assessment, how we're using it in the district, what it's replacing, and those kind of things tonight. So I appreciate you letting me do this. We have partnered with this organization, NWEA. It is a nonprofit organization there in, from Oregon is where they started. They've been in business over 40 years, and they have 7,400 partners across this country. So they work with school districts, schools, they actually have some international partners that they work with. And their goal has always been just to partnering to help all students learn, and that's the focus of this, of this organization. Because they want to make sure that we have the most accurate data that we can have about students so that we can ensure growth for all of our students. And that's really a, a nice fit for Murfreesboro City Schools because we certainly do want to see all of our students grow. So that's, that gives you a little bit of background about the organization, NWEA. I wanted to give you some information about what we were doing last year and how this year looks a little bit different with this particular assessment. As a part of response to instruction and intervention, we're required to give a universal screener three times a year. And so it's an assessment that we give in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And from that assessment, we determine the students that fall in the bottom 25th percentile, and those students we target for intervention. So that is a requirement of the state. And then last year, we used an assessment called Ames Web to do that. Ames Web is just a, a temperature taker. We would give the students an individual assessment, so our personnel would have to sit down with individual students and give them a series of three probes, reading probes that took about a minute apiece. Then they had to give them a math test that took eight minutes. So it all was, a lot of it was individualized, and it was just taking the temperature to see which students fell in that bottom 25th percentile. And we used Ames Web to do that. Ames Web did not give us a lot of instructional information. It just gave us information about who we could tap for intervention, and that was the primary use of that product. We also use it for our intervention, students that are in intervention. Because we want to, what Ames Web does is, it is very sensitive to change in growth. So we can monitor students that are getting intervention either weekly or bi-weekly, and then we get a trend of how those students are responding to the interventions that we're providing in our schools. So if we see that a student's not making progress, then we can adjust those interventions to make sure that the students do make progress. So Ames Web served two purposes. We also used, and I know you've heard of this one, Discovery Ed Think Link. And that assessment measured standards. It measured the standards that we were going to be assessing on our T-CAP test at the end of the year. We gave this test in grades one through six. Once again, we did that three times a year. It would take about 45 minutes for the reading and 45 minutes for the math, and they, it was a paper pencil assessment that we would give our students. Then we would send it off and get that data back, and teachers would have information that would help guide their instruction. The Think Link assessment also, at, at one time, was very helpful to help us gauge our progress toward how well our students were going to be doing on T-CAP. But as the state changed, dropped some of the standards that we were assessing, Think Link dropped them as well, but our information didn't tend to be as reliable as, as it had been in the past. So when we looked at individual students and what they were scoring on Think Link, we weren't getting a good match when we got our test scores back at the end of the year. And there was concerns about that across the district. They, you know, they really lost confidence in the data that we were getting from that particular assessment. So this year, what we tried to do, I know you've voiced some concerns in the past about the number of assessments that we're giving. I know I've fielded those questions before from you in the past, and I, I understand that. So what we, what we have now is, last year where we had Ames Web and Think Link three times a year, this year, we have one assessment three times a year. So we will no longer do the Ames Web three times a year, we will no longer do Think Link three times a year, and we've replaced that with the NWEA assessment called, we call it MAP, Measures of Academic Progress. That particular, this particular assessment gives us two types of data. It gives us data on how our students are, are progressing on the Common Core standards, which we're required by the state of Tennessee to teach. So we, it breaks it down into skills or learning targets for the teachers. So it gives us that, but it also gives us that norm data that we need to identify the students that need intervention. Now, we'll continue to use the Ames Web for progress monitoring for those students that are in intervention because that particular assessment is very sensitive to growth, and we can give it more than three times a year. So we would be using that assessment with a much smaller number of students this year. So those are, that kind of lets you know what we, what we had and where this falls for this year. So this particular, the assessment is called the Measures of Academic Progress, and we call it MAP for short. So I think that if you're looking at the MAP assessment, you might ask, well, how is this different? Number one, it's a computerized test. Our students took the assessment on our new technology all the way from K through six. And a typical assessment, if you think about it, is every student in that, in a classroom gets that grade level assessment. So when I, when I have a class of fourth graders and they're taking T-CAP, or when they took Think Link, I gave everyone an identical assessment, and they all took it in that class. But we know that when we're looking at our classes, not all children learn at the same rate, and not all children are on grade level. We have some students that are above grade level, and we have some students that are below grade level. And that particular fourth grade test really did, does very little to tap into what that student that's way up here knows. I noticed in a fourth grade classroom, when I was in a classroom when they were taking their MAP assessment, a student's score came up, and when we looked at the norm table, the fourth grader was ready to do seventh grade work in that area. So we've never really been able to tap into just where these students were. And likewise, our students that are well below grade level, we've traditionally read them the test, and we've tried to give them, make that fourth grade assessment work for them. But this particular assessment drops down for those students so that we know exactly where all of our students are when they start the beginning of the year. So this is what it might look like. If I'm a student and I'm in third grade, they give me my first question, the first time I ever take MAP, and it's a third grade item. So if I happen to get that question correct, my next question gets a little bit harder. If I miss that question, then my next question is going to drop down, and it's going to be a little bit easier. And then it keeps going back and forth as I get the questions correct. And then what they're looking to find is for students, where they're getting the questions correct about 50% of the time. And when they do that, they know that is the student's instructional level where the teacher would start working with that student. So it doesn't necessarily means that they've mastered it, it's just they're ready to learn that. So it's, it's a challenge for students that have always gotten everything right, are really bright students. When they would take the assessment, they would labor over it because, you know, they wanted, you know, they weren't used to having that kind of challenge on an assessment, which was kind of exciting. They took a lot of time to do it and were very engaged in the process. So this is, if you want to look at a sixth grade score, we start out with this particular one, and they answer the first, they give them the first question, but the student misses it, a sixth grade, and I'm just kind of running through this list here. But as they drop, they end up finding the air, the level of that student. So this particular student scored on 195, which is a pretty good bit below that grade level score, that six, that typical sixth grader's score. So that's how it determines where the students fall. So what we do is, we take that scale, it's called, it's a, the score comes back, it's called a RIT score. And that score is, is a, a score that's equal. It starts at kindergarten, and then it keeps going up all the way through. So students, just like when they're growing up and they're, you put them on the yardstick against your door and see how tall they are, the MAP test will do that in every year. That score is, is, this means, you know, it means the same no matter when you do it. So like typically, when you think about, sometimes students get test scores and they're in the 96th percentile. They may get that score, but then the next year, they may say they're in the 96th percentile. With a RIT score, they're going to get like a 142 in kindergarten, and they may get a 140, a 150 in first grade, and that score's going to grow. So it's really clear, not only to students, but to families, what that actually means. So like I say, this is, it's an equal interval scale, it's used to show growth. And then we take those scores and we look at where the students fall and the skills that they need to help them grow, and that's what this, what this assessment will do. So we're really looking at charting growth just over time for our students. So this particular example is of a fourth grade class. Typical fourth grade class score might be a 199, but this particular student scored way up here in like 223. So when the teacher drills into that student, they can see, this is, these are the things that the student is ready to learn right now, and if I want to grow that student, which we want all of our students to grow, then I need to move them over to the column that's on the right. So that's how this turns into instructional materials. We also have a norm table, so now we can compare our students with other students across the country. With T-CAP, we, we compare them across Tennessee, but this gives us a national comparison. So we know what a typical score is at beginning of kindergarten, middle of kindergarten, end of kindergarten, and all the way through. And that's based on thousands and thousands of test results that they've used to develop these norms over time. We also will, can look at this and tell what typical growth is for a student, and what this is going to help us do is goal setting for our students. We know a student that scores based on the data, that score starts out at a 150 in second grade, may grow 15 point, that their goal would be 15 points to get a year's growth. So students will know their scores, they're going to know what they need to progress, and our teachers will use those goals as well for instruction. So it will provide us information about instruction for the individual students. It gives us a clear roadmap for where we need our students to go to meet them, to meet their goals and to achieve. And it's really not a test for determining mastery, it's more of a test to help us determine how are our students progressing over time, and what do we need to do to help them grow at a rapid pace? So this RIT score, and we've already talked about this, turns into a RIT score, which are learning targets, and teachers can use that for instruction. That's what they're ready to start learning today. So how will we use it in Murfreesboro? We're going to use it for our universal screener, it'll replace Ames Web. We're going to use it for differentiating instruction reports. I think Amber's going to talk to you a little bit about those reports. We can use it for program evaluation. We can tar, we can tag students that are, that are in certain programs. Maybe we do studies based on students that receive grants, you know, that are the beneficiaries of grants, did that make a difference? We can track this, that information. And we also plan to use it for student goal setting, which is really one of the most powerful things that we can do for students, is for them to set their own goals and see the path to, to improving in that. We had a lot of success with it. I would say we tested maybe over 7,500 students in three weeks' time. But I feel like the teachers were pleased with the data, and we have the data that we need for response to intervention and instruction. Now, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be honest with you if I didn't stand up here and tell you we had a few struggles. We, as you know, we added a lot of students this year, so our database was not very, wasn't as clean as we would have liked for it to have been. We had a lot of students that entered our system that didn't have a state number. We hired a bunch of teachers, it felt like, that week, so we had to re-roster classrooms, and when teachers tried to pull students up, sometimes the students weren't there. So we, we tried to offer as much support as we could from the district office. I know Carissa worked on entering students one weekend solid, trying to get them ready so that we would have this data in for this, this teachers to use. We had some bandwidth issues on our technology at Hopgood and, I've got it written down, Bradley. And it really brought our, our bandwidth to its knees. The first morning we tried it, but our technicians went in and added some additional, whatever they do, routers or whatever they put in those schools that would, they could do for not a lot of money. They weren't able to bring it up to speed. And really, it's a good thing we know this because when we take the riding test, it takes more bandwidth than this particular assessment. But we were able to work that out within a couple of days. It was a new process, new procedures. I think once the, the teachers administered it the first day, maybe if they did their reading the first day, when they did the math and the language after that, they were much more comfortable with it. And then the last thing that we had concern about was our little, our little ones, our kindergartners, were they going to be able to do this assessment? Could they work this mouse pad, I mean, the track pad on a laptop to do that? And so what we did to address that is we allowed, we extended the window a week. We worked to try to make sure that they had some practice time before they actually had to take the assessment. But I'm going to be honest with you, I was in a kindergarten classroom watching those students take the assessment, they, they know how to do it better than I do. I had one little boy that I was going to kind of show him how to get going with it, and he just kind of pushed me back and said, "I've got this." So, and our, our, our scores for kindergarten were, were quite good. I mean, so I think our students did well as far as learning this new technology and able to do it. And from the teachers in kindergarten, they said the second day, the students just sat down and were able to do it. So that's really, that's all I have. Amber is going to come and speak, and then we'll entertain some questions. Or you want one from me right now?
Ms. Phillips?
First of all, I want to thank you, and it sounds like you made some good choices about the assessment device that you all are using. I really want to thank you about that. You talked about the results the family would be able to use. So the, these results from, from these assessments, these three assessments, they are sent to the family? Are they, is there any explanation that goes with the family so they know?
We, we had training last week with school teams. We brought in an administrator and two teachers, and Amber was in that training, and they learned about all the reports, the student report, and then the schools submitted to us their plan for rolling it out to their teachers. So before parent-teacher conferences, our teachers will learn about the student report and how to communicate that information to families. So we plan to give that information to families, and that the student reports tracks their growth over time. So as this district continue, if we continue to use this assessment, you can have as many as, as, like, we could have as many as seven years' worth of data for our students that shows families how they've grown over time.
Right. You know, and if you're, and if parents, there are, there are many parents who would love to support what's happening in the classroom and where their child might be having a struggle, but if they have that good information to help them. My next question is, you talked about how the columns for the curriculum, and if a student's performing very well, and then the, then the teacher would want to move them to the next column for curriculum, do our teachers have the time and support to really help the advanced? Do our teachers have the time and support to really help the advanced students?
I think, I think that's a question that's, um, a question we've been trying to address in our district, um, what we can do to help the students that are, um, advanced. Uh, we arrange our intervention times so that we have support for our struggling students and as well as our students that are advanced. The good news about this is it gives those teachers that are teaching those upper grade, upper level groups, some strategic steps, learning targets on that student's instructional level. So it really points it out.
Uh huh.
And there's one particular, um, um, teacher report, and it's actually a, a grid, and it, and it has the different RIT bands according to the levels of the students. And inside each box are the list of students that scored at that level, and a teacher can click on that, pull a small group, and have information that they need for instruction. So it's the, the reports are very user-friendly for our teachers.
And my last comment or question, both kind of, was the, what I heard primarily were the concerns were the actual hands-on problems with the computers and training with the computer. That's what I heard people talk about with, with any grumbling at all, so.
And, and, in all, in all honesty, we turned this on a dime. I mean, we, we couldn't make our purchase, our contract until later on, we had our training, we loaded our students in, and it was amazing that we were able to do it as fast as we were. So it's, I, I know that the next one will be better.
Uh huh.
Um, and we've, I think we're, we'll be much more prepared in December, because at least we'll know who's going to be there then, as opposed to at the beginning of the year.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Vanier?
Uh, just a couple of questions. I'm on our, the district's assessment schedule, and you were saying this map is going to eliminate Ames Web and Think Link. I'm still seeing Ames Web on here, am I looking at something different, or?
Well, Ames Web, we use for progress monitoring for our students that are in the bottom 25th percentile.
Okay. I just wanted to make-
And that'll happen weekly.
And, I still, I have a couple more.
And the, oh, the beha-, oh, I'm sorry, there's the behavior, um, scale that we do as well.
Okay.
So that's Ames Web.
That clear, okay, that clear. And then, you said the Think Link took 45 minutes for the reading and math?
Forty-five each, yes.
Okay. And so the Ames Web took how long when we were doing that?
Huh. Um, well, the Ames Web, it's, it's kind of a tricky one to figure, because it took a lot of staff time. Our interventionists and EAs were out of their, out of their classrooms about, uh, I would say 12 weeks a year, giving that Ames Web assessment.
But for an average student, I guess, that's what I was asking.
Oh, for the average student, it probably would have been, what, 15?
14.
15 or 15 minutes, yes.
Okay. So how long is the, maybe I missed it, the map, how long has that taken?
On average, it's about, on average, it's about 50, 55 minutes.
Okay. Okay.
We also give the language for our upper grade students as well, and that's given us some good information.
Ms. Vanier?
Um, thank you for, this is wonderful, I appreciate your presentation. The, um, I did hear about computer problems, and, but I did want to ask, how does this match up with TCAP?
Uh, this is aligned to Common Core. And when we worked with our, worked with teachers last year in selecting this, we thought we would be using Common Core. It's going to give us information about how students grow, but it is a Common Core assessment. So our teachers, we've spent a lot of time helping them, giving them information, identifying exactly what's going to be assessed on TCAP. And some of this aligns, but, um, but some of it is still the old Tennessee standards that we're being tested on. And that's really the dilemma that we're in right now in Tennessee, because we're being asked to teach Common Core, but yet we're still being assessed on those Tennessee standards.
So you, okay, so on the TCAP, just for clarification, has anyone seen a TCAP test?
Well, for, this year?
From last year?
Well, you know.
Have you seen a TCAP test?
I'm, technically, I cannot view a TCAP.
You don't get to see the TCAP test.
We're not allowed by state law.
So we don't really know if anything ever is going to align?
Well, you know, I, I, I trust that those SPIs are going to be on the TCAP, but by t-, teachers and administrators, we could lose our license for sitting down and checking off what from-
Right. So nobody from our system ever gets, so we don't really know what's going to fall into place? Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify.
We have a list, we have a list of standards, we have the lead curriculum person at the State Department that assures us that that's what's going to be on the assessment, and, and I have no reason to doubt that those standards would be on there.
I, I just heard, you know, from scores going down, that maybe it wasn't matching, and-
Well, it does, it does not match well to Common Core. I can, I do know that, because I have studied that. I have looked at the Common Core standards, I've looked at the Tennessee standards. We have a good match, probably a better match at fourth grade than we do at third and fifth.
For the TCAP or for this assessment?
Between Common Core and the TCAP assessment.
Which is, which is why, when you look at, when you look at the, the scores across the state, third grade didn't, went down, fifth grade went down, and seventh, I think, too.
Seventh grade went down as well.
So those, those are things that we've noticed, but we've really tried to give the teachers tools to help them with those SPIs. And, and to be honest, I think we just had to give them permission that it was okay to work on those Tennessee standards. I think last year, they felt like they needed to work on just Common Core, and this year, we've made it very clear that we know that they need to work on both. And this will give us measure, it'll also give us indication of, for the future, for our students, where we might fall on whatever Common Core assessment we have in our district.
Okay, so, um, to go along with what Ms. Phillips was saying, you mentioned a child that may have been working at seventh, prepared to do seventh grade work. Could a child be elevated to a different, at one point several years ago, some children were maybe in fifth grade math class when they were really fourth graders. Are we allowing any children to do that? Or are we just depending on intervention time for step up?
Well, we, we really depend on intervention time, because then each year, it's going to, if you're in a, if you're in a building and you have a student that might, could go up a grade level just for maybe their intervention time for some enrichment, or you could pull a small group, the cross-grade levels, that, that could work well. But if you get to the end of the road, and you're in the sixth grade, and you don't have a seventh grader in the bill, a seventh grade class, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
You have to really be able to provide those interventions for students within their grade, grade band. But this is a tool that will help-
To show.
To help show, these are some of the things, the skills that your student can do, that they can work on.
Okay, and then, results, we don't get those until, the parents don't get those until the parent-teacher conference, which is at the end of the month, at the end of October?
Yes, yes.
Um, and then, there was a permission slip, was this a permission slip for this test or for Ames Web?
It was for behavior and the OVAIS, um, the OVAIS.
So that's another test, okay.
And we have to get, and, and we have to get permission for those. But this is something we give to all of our students as a practice.
Okay. That's the only, right, so only permission slip would be for the behavior one. Okay, thank you, correct.
Ms. Vanier?
I'm not sure that this ties with the assessments that you're talking about now, but I remember when you came, when you were realigning the report cards with standards being taught. And I don't think we ever got copies or were able to see those, um, so this may be inappropriate for me to ask, but would we be able to get a copy of a particular report card or a grade-level report card?
Sure, sure.
Are they aligned to which standards?
They're aligned to Common Core.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and that's coming up with parent conferences?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And last, this past year, our teachers came together and they selected power standards for English Language Arts, like we had power standards for math. So we've revised our report cards to reflect the power standards, so that we're really measuring the things that they've identified as the most important.
For this year?
For this year. So those are, those were, have been revised during the summer and are in the teachers' grade books right now.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
First of all, hats off to all of our curriculum and assessment staff, because I just wish the state of Tennessee could get a test they could get behind, you know, really behind, because we learned in our legislative session in Gatlinburg that the state plans to rebrand Common Core, um, and they might do a lot of changing along the way. And so it seems like you just, you know, you just get ready for one, um, list of demands, and now you have to do something entirely different. So, you know, hats off to you. But I know that Florida, I believe it was Florida, that already had their Common Core fail, um, their basic Common Core fail, and they're, they're having to redo it, too. So, you know, I just wanted to take that moment and thank you, and, and comment that I wish our state could, you know, find what really is effective for our children.
Thank you, ma'am, very mu-, okay? One more.
All right, so I am just going to talk for just a few minutes, um, and then field questions, and if I don't know the answer, I'm going to, sorry Karen. Um, I'm a fourth grade teacher at Scales Elementary. My name is Amber East. Um, grew up in Murfreesboro City Schools, and I'm proud to be a teacher here as an adult. You asked several questions about the technology issues. Um, what I did with my students before taking the test, a few days before, I showed them a video, um, that was on the NWBA website, of a student sitting down to take the test and asking questions to their teacher. And then it actually, he like jumped into the computer screen and like it showed him how the, the questions would need to be answered, and how he wouldn't get them all correct. And so it really showed my students kind of what to expect. After they watched that video, we did a practice test together. And so I showed them, hey, in some questions, you're going to have to answer by clicking an ABC choice. Some questions are going to ask you to move things around. So I prepared them ahead of time, so that when they looked at the test, they weren't shocked and confused. Um, what I do like about the test, um, is that it's adaptive. It really, um, finds where the students are academically. Um, there's not a time limit. So my students that are slower and really think things through, they have some, some time to take it. I let them, I let them go. Now, I did have some that, I mean, you have them in every class, that just are speed racers, and they just go and go and go. This test gives you the option to retest them. So if they finished, I had a student take the reading test, 50 some odd questions, in 19 minutes. And so I walked over to him, and I said, you know, I've been reading for quite a few years now, and I couldn't have taken this test that quickly. So I reset him, and he, the first time, he got 20% correct. And when he retook it and took his time, he had got 45%. Now, that's not stellar, but it's better than 20%. If I would have looked at that original score and not made him retested, he would have been in one of the tier-two or tier-three, um, things during intervention. So I like that as well. Um, it has the student progress reports that you can print off that were mentioned to go over in parent conferences, so you can see where the student is. Um, it shows areas of strength and weaknesses as far as, um, if you look at their RIT score and they're a 180 in math, but broken down, it, when you look into math, if you see geometry and they're a 192, well, you know, that's above their average, so that's where they're strong. Now, specifically in geometry, um, what did they get right and what did they miss? We don't know that. But I do know that this kid is going to do well when we get to geometry. Um, the class report that you can pull off is just your list of kids. It shows, um, things such as their Lexile number, which is their reading level. So it gives us ideas of what level of books they should be reading, um, at their independent level. Um, it also shows you how long they took on the test, so you can look at that. Um, it also shows you their RIT score. So you can look at, are they in second grade? Did they test into third grade? Did they test into seventh grade? I have one reading in the ninth grade. So, um, that really helps me determine where I need to be putting these kids when I'm doing my small group, um, instruction during tier-one time. There's another, um, report called the Class Breakdown Report, and that's what Karen mentioned earlier. It's, um, a chart, and it basically pairs kids into groups according to their RIT band. So all of my students that are, I don't know, an example of 180 to a 187 are all grouped together. So I know, hey, this is my small group for reading, or this is my small group for math. Um, when I click on that box, it takes me further in, so I can see, okay, this isn't my group for math, but when I'm teaching geometry, or if I'm teaching algebraic thinking, they may be way down here, so I can break down the data a little further. So it shows where they're weak and where they're strong, and, um, then it also links to the learning continuum, where you can see, okay, at this level, they would be answering 25% of the questions right. At this level, they would be answering 50% of the answers correctly. And that's where their, um, RIT score comes from. So that's what I've used so far, like I said. Not an expert, this is the first time we've given it. So as we continue to give it, we'll learn more about it and, and be able to interpret data even more, so. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one quick question.
Okay.
When you said you, you could drill down and look at the data, when a student takes the test, how long is, is the data available to you? Pretty much instantly?
Um, it comes in 24 hours after they take the test.
Okay. And then once the data comes back to you, it's as fast as you can click through it to get the answers that you need?
Yep.
So, okay.
Yep. So, and then you can download them in PDFs, and I've created a whole binder of student reports and that kind of stuff, so I can, if I'm at home, or if I'm just wherever, I can just flip through it and whatnot, so.
Okay.
It's always accessible online in your PDFs, so.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you both, that's very good. We appreciate your explanation, we have learned a lot, I'm sure. Okay. All right, personnel update?
Your personnel update is in your packet, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those, uh, just give me a call. And then we have the monthly revenue and expenditure report and the attendance report.
It's the, uh, financial report, I, there's two of them in there, one for the month of July, and one for the month of August. I thought I'd go through the one for August. Since July, you really have no revenues coming in at all, and it's just pretty much what we end up with each, uh, at the end of the month of July. But in August, I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that we had a net income of negative Last year at this time, we had a negative $1,423,000, so approximately $100,000 more negative. And I would like to try to go through and explain some of the highlights of the, of the revenue and expenses on that. You'll turn to the next, the next page. It's, uh, we're at the 16.7% of the year. Uh, the local option sales tax is up about $75,000, which is really good. If we continue that trend, that will make our, our budget year on local revenues really good. So as we get closer to the holiday season, be sure to shop in Murfreesboro and keep the money here. A little editorial comment.
That's true.
Uh, revenue-wise, 8.5% revenue has come in. Last year at this time, we were at 8.3, so we're basically on target for that. On the expenditure side, um, wanted to go over some things that, that we look, when I review this report each month, I look at the percentage of where we should be versus where we are. Um, and the first one that comes that pops up is attendance is at 21.6%, uh, when it should be at 16.7. That one, and the fiscal services, and the personnel services are all above where we would think they would be. And the reason for that is because we pay upfront expenditures for Skyward, so they all hit the first month or two of the year. And as you'll see at the end of the year, they level themselves out, but they're upfront expenditures, so they're higher. The other one I want to bring your attention to is regular capital outlay. Last year at this time, it was 11.8, and this year it's at, at 55%. And the reason for that is we did a whole lot of work this summer on capital outlay projects. So you can see, we've spent, uh, uh, from the previous year, we've, we've spent about $400,000 more, which explains the negative, uh, on the financial report. But still, you know, our budget is still at 941, just that we got a whole lot of work done early this year on capital outlay projects. So, and overall, we've, it's 10.6% of the total yearly expenditures, and really, we could be at 16.7. So we feel we're in pretty good shape based on the knowledge of where we are in our, on our budget and our fund balance. Anyone have any questions on where we are at this point?
Ms. Vanier?
I have a question, but I don't know if it fits there, and, and I, I'm not even sure this is the question. Because our numbers increased, because of our enrollment increases this year, did we purchase additional computers for those additional classrooms to keep the one-to-two ratio? And if so, is that here on capital outlay, or that's buildings, right?
Uh, yes, we did.
Yes, and yes.
Purchase more, and I'm not sure when exactly the money hits the report.
Okay.
What we're doing on that is we're turning over the total amount of purchase on technology. We did not buy all the computers for overall Creek when we, when we started.
Right.
So we actually had some money left over from the original purchase, and we do process it through the city since we are sharing on that percentage.
Right.
So I'm not sure exactly when it hit on here. I'd have to go back and, and look.
Okay, but what line item does that come under?
On that particular one, we would have, it, it's not under capital outlay for the computers, that's a totally different item.
Right.
It would be under the other support area, technology.
What line is that?
72810.
Oh, 72810?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So how are we there?
We're at 14.4%.
Okay.
So I don't think it hit here yet because we would have seen a bigger number at this point.
Yeah.
And since this is a Ju-, August report, by the time we knew what we had and placed an order, we wouldn't have paid for it yet.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Mine is just a little secretarial thing, Mr. Anderson. Would it be possible to number these lines, like one, two, three, four? The reason is, you'll be talking, and maybe, maybe this is only me, but I'm trying to read where you're saying, you know, fiscal services or operations of the plan. I'm trying to read this list to get to the right line, and you've, you've finished it by the time I find the right line. So if you could say, you know, we're on year-to-date expenditure, you know, line two, I could find it so much easier and quicker.
No problem.
Okay.
We can, we can put it on both sides of the chart, so it's easy to find.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Ms. Vanier? No, I'm sorry. Okay?
Okay, the next thing is your enrollment or attendance report, and I put at your desk tonight the one from yesterday. As you can see, the enrollment and attendance has leveled off, that we're only two students difference from the, from the one that was dated on the 11th to yesterday, the 22nd. So we're, we're pretty, pretty level now that, you know, some of the highlights are, our overall pupil teacher ratio, K through six, is 19.87 to one overall. We also had 98%-
I thought you meant overall school. Sorry. Overall, the city.
No, overall, no, overall, for the whole, whole city, we are 19.87 to one. Our attendance percentage is at 98%. So we're real pleased with that.
That's great.
And you can see the, the number on the bottom right-hand side, the district totals are 7,942, if you're looking at the newest one, or 7,944, if you're looking at the one from two weeks ago, or a week and a half ago. Enrollment wise, we budgeted 7,600, and you can see we're up over 300 students more, 340 students over what we had budgeted. So the numbers are, you know, it's really strong for us on that. I did talk with the state about any possibility of getting some additional funds based on BEP and our growth, and they said, there of course is that possibility, but it would be January before we would be able to see anything. Any questions on the enrollment?
Thank you, sir.
I, I do have a question.
I'm sorry.
I, I listened to an interview that, or, I, the city manager was talking about growth, and apparently he was just telling the city council about the growth. Can you explain what I heard on the radio and that he wasn't really asking for more money?
Oh, from what, what the city council approved?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking?
Because there was quite a conversation.
Okay.
And the, the part that was on the radio that you could hear, I mean, that-
I, I don't know exactly what they said, but I think the gist of it was that they may have thought that we were asking the city council for additional funds. What, what we, since we are a city school system, the city council has to approve our budget monies, revenues and expenditures. So we, after you approved it at the last meeting, we had to present it to the city council to vote on. We did not ask city council for any additional revenue. What we asked them to do was to approve us putting in the budget additional revenues we expect based on our tax collections and our BEP. BEP is Basic Education Program Funds from the state. And also utilization of our fund, existing fund balance. We did not go to them and ask them to approve any additional monies. We asked them to let us use the funds that are, or anticipated coming in, but we didn't get any additional city funds. And so I went, I, I'm assuming that's where you were headed on this when you asked the question.
Correct. So you, the protocol, y'all would never go ask for more money without it coming through here?
What, what that was, was simply approval of the addendum that you had done the month before.
Okay.
And the city had asked us to do addendums. Instead of doing them at the end of the year, we now do them on a regular basis. So it was, it was reported incorrectly, and I happened to listen to that. The question also came of, there was a statement made of, it seems to be earlier in the year for us to be asking for, for changing our budget. But basically, we were having to do that because we've been asked to do that on a regular basis, plus we had 461 children show up that we didn't know were going to show up. So it's a little hard to wait until the end of the year to hire teachers for those kids. You've got to hire at the beginning of the year.
All right, so, and to answer your, your question about it, we could not go to city council without your approval on a budget.
Okay.
They have to approve it after you do.
Because I had to tell you, I was a bit alarmed because I did hear and-
I saw and had a heart attack the night that I read that on the-
Okay, thank you.
And asked them to correct it.
Okay.
In fact, I wrote Mr. Campbell very shortly after that.
Good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And he spoke to the powers that be at the city council the other night.
Thank you so much.
Anything else on the personnel report? All right. Back to you. Attendants, okay. Other business? Anything to come up? Other business?
We, we were discussing possibly changing the date of our November meeting to allow for Thanksgiving week for us not to have a meeting, but maybe possibly have it the week before for our November session? If that would work for everyone?
All right, so right now, we're scheduled, the work session November 11th, and then the 25th. So you're saying?
The 18th. Or we would have, I mean, I don't know what would be the preference of the board, or Dr. Gilbert, or Ms. Baker.
Do you want to, and I don't have a clue.
Well, I have the calendar in front of me. The policy session is the, the regular session is the 25th, which falls the week of Thanksgiving. So that leaves the 18th in between to either move the 25th meeting up to the 18th? Is that what you were thinking?
That, that was my suggestion, but maybe we could-
I would suggest maybe, too, that we, we, we schedule the meeting on the 11th. Then if we don't need to meet on the second meeting in November, we can cancel it at that time. But if we do need to, do we have it on the 18th? Maybe? That's a suggestion. Now, remember, we're going to try to get a, a meeting with the county board in there somewhere.
If we do move it to the 18th, would somebody be in here? Somebody, is this room already spoken for by chance?
I would just have to check and see on that.
Do you want me to have Ms. Price, when we get to office tomorrow, poll you all and see what's on the calendar and see what the 18th looks like? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's fine. Then I'll also ask to remind you to please look at your dates in those first two or three weeks of November where you cannot have the joint session with the county board. We can try and get that, get that scheduled pretty quick before Thanksgiving.
Right now, the 13th is what, is the 13th the date that he said?
Well, that's just what Wayne and I talked about, but we're, that's flexible.
Ms. Vanier, would you?
Ms. Vanier?
Also, just as a reminder, if you can, I think I gave everybody a copy of the dates for the city council meetings, possibly dates that you could attend, and get it back to me, and I'll get the schedule out. And I think another issue, I don't know if I had wrong email addresses or what, but folks, we're not checking our email, I don't think. So we need to make sure that that's taken care of. And I know that Ms. Baker's office asked for email addresses, so we need to make sure that we all have that information.
And Ms., Ms. Price, I think, has had a problem a time or two on getting our responses. So we need to get those done when possible. Let me remind you of the TSBA meeting in November. Is that the 14th and 15th? Is that right? Somewhere along in there? If you would like to attend, if you have not already, let Ms. Price know. Please do so, so that she can make those reservations for those that would like to, to attend that two or three day meeting in Nashville. Right?
The meeting is November 14th and 15th, and the full conference is the 15th through 17th.
Okay, all right.
For that reason, I would not like to have the meeting on the 13th.